I'd like to call to order the Wilsonville City Council meeting for March 15, 2021. Could I ask the city recorder for a roll call, please?
Counselor Linville?
Excuse me. Excuse me, I meant to do the roll call first. I mean, the flag salute.
No, I think you're right. Roll call then, flag salute.
I'm sorry. Please go ahead with the roll call.
Counselor Linville?
Here.
Counselor President Ocravol?
Here.
Counselor Leahan? Mayor Fitzgerald?
Here.
And Counselor West is excused.
Thank you. Would the city manager please do the roll, the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could I have a motion to approve the order of agenda as amended? Counselor Linville?
Your Honor, I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Counselor Leahan, thank you for seconding the agenda. And all in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
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 Motion passes four to zero. We're now going to move to mayor's business, and I want to start by saying that our next city council meeting is going to be held on April 5th, so mark that down. And we have many different meetings happening, which I would like to refer you to the city website for that, and also there is a listing in the council package. I had a few items I wanted to talk about under mayor's business, and I'm just getting my notes ready. I had my modem go out just at home this afternoon, so I had to completely reconfigure everything, so thanks for bearing with me. We've had some exciting news happening with our work to advance the Boone Bridge design. Until last week, on March 11, the Oregon Transportation Commission approved a statewide transportation improvement program reallocation. It's called the STIP program to fund the engineering design that we've been talking about as the next step for the Boone Bridge improvements. And so it's engineering design for the proposed I-5 Boone Bridge and seismic improvement project. So you probably recall that Oregon Department of Transportation staff presented to the city council about this project just recently, last month in February. And last week, the city submitted a letter about our goals for the Boone Bridge replacement and seismic improvements to the Oregon Transportation Commission under my signature. So we're just really pleased about that. Also wanted to make note, and I wanted, before I move on, I wanted to thank Representative Neron also for helping us to really highlight that and understand it. We've had a number of different discussions with executives with ODOT who have been very helpful. And I know several years ago, this council also committed some of, some local funds, I think $50,000 toward an initial study. Also, Representative McLean has been really a great partner in helping us talk about the needs for this important part of our West Coast traffic infrastructure. So we'll see that move along, and I just want to thank everybody who's been a part of that, including our staff and members of the council. My next item is to talk about the recently enacted American Rescue Plan of 2021, which provides host programs and benefits that are designed to help Americans with all these negative economic impacts, of which there are many regarding the COVID-19 pandemic and recession, and to help stimulate the economy. So the latest we have on this is that the Office of Senator Ron Wyden recently provided an estimate that Wilsonville should expect to receive about $5 million from this American Rescue Plan Act, with 2.5 million to be received this year and 2.5 million next year. And there are some listed eligible uses of these funds, including responding to the COVID-19 public health emergency, providing premium pay to essential workers, offsetting lost revenues to provide essential government services for water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. It does exclude reducing taxes by legislation, regulation, or administration, and it excludes deposits into pension funds. Recipient governments are required to provide periodic reports accounting for the use of the funds to the Treasury Department. I also have, wanted to update you on work we're doing, that I'm doing consistent with our long-term direction regarding wanting a seat at the table around the Aurora State Airport plan and the Aurora State Airport legislation that we've been talking about. So I'm working on a joint letter with Aurora Mayor Brian Asher that would be sent to the Joint Transportation Committee co-chairs to request a public hearing on House Bill 2497 that we spoke about at recent meetings. And as you probably recall, this bill, House Bill 2497, is the proposed legislation that would provide an open, transparent, public process to resolve controversial management of the Aurora State Airport by the Department of Aviation. The city councils of both Aurora and Wilsonville have requested Representative Courtney Neron to introduce the bill, and now we will request a hearing on the bill. So we are working on that letter. Also, another item of focus has been testimony on domestic water quality legislation. We, the city, provided testimony in support of a trio of bills before the House Committee on Water. These bills provide the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality, DEQ, with resources to study harmful algal blooms, which are called HABs often, and to conduct cyanotoxin analysis in order to protect public health. So the three bills include House Bill 3102, which provides resources to DEQ to purchase a cyanotoxin auto-analyzing system instrument that would give in-state centralized locations for a quick turnaround analysis of domestic water samples. And that's crucial for public water systems in order to protect the public health. And the second bill of the three is House Bill 3093. That directs DEQ to study the causes of harmful algal blooms. And then the third one is House Bill 2821, which declares harmful algal blooms to be a menace to public health and welfare and directs the Oregon Health Authority to identify water sources that are susceptible to this problem and monitor them for the public health. So I've also had a number of meetings. It's a very busy season, as I'm sure you've all been seeing with the legislature. I've had a number of meetings with Metropolitan Mayor's Consortium, and we have talked about some of the bills that I just mentioned, and including one that is regarding, that is, there's going to be a hearing tomorrow for regarding SDCs. And that bill, I think I would ask Mr. Ottenhead maybe to share a letter of opposition that we have to a bill regarding SDCs a little bit later on after the meeting. But basically, we just want to continue our long-term focus on maintaining local control and being able to have cities be able to make their decisions regarding SDCs. The initial concept of this bill was to have a study to analyze how SDCs are arrived at, and I think there is interest in that general concept of studying SDCs. So we'll learn more about that as time goes on. But during the last couple of weeks, I've met with, had a meeting with TriMet, really a get-to-know-you meeting, and thinking about some of our shared goals. Had a meeting with United Healthcare. As you may have read in the paper, they are now seeking a certificate of need, and that process has begun. I had a wonderful tour of the, one of the vaccination sites in Clackamas County that is being hosted by Clackamas Community College and operationalized by Tuollet and Valley Fire and Rescue. And people are accessing all of these sites through the Oregon Health Authority and county vaccine signups where they, you know, I think they're continuing to have better success with those, and people are assigned to site. And our site here in Wilsonville is operating under that umbrella, and they're continuing to be able to get more and more people vaccinated, which I think is so important to everything we have going on in our lives, every way, any way you can think of it. So the more we can do to get people feeling confident about and getting access to vaccines, the better. And I want to really thank the college and also Tuollet and Valley Fire and Rescue and city, the city staff who helped with some logistics there. I was also asked to give a presentation to the Home Builders Association of Metropolitan Portland. They had, I think it was their spring meeting, and they invited a number of mayors to present on their housing plans. And that was, that was good, enjoyed doing that. And I attended a meeting of the Clackamas County Coordinating Committee, and I appreciate all of the other counselors who also attend these meetings and help to keep us informed and involved in our priorities right in front of where they need to be. Also attended Washington County Coordinating Meeting, the Washington County Mayors Association, and this last week attended a meeting that was, one of the sessions put on by our city staff regarding the implementation of the middle housing program relative to House Bill 2001. There are a number of workshops going on. This one happened to me with the Old Town Neighborhood, and I enjoyed attending that to listen through that with them. So thank you very much, and I will now move to, we have three items under communications. And I'd like to first welcome representatives from Republic Services tonight, who will deliver their 2020 biannual report to the council, which we also have in our package.
That's not the order of the agenda.
That's all right, let him in.
Okay. All right.
Hello? Can everyone hear me now?
You can, you can put Zo in the lobby.
Okay, are we, are we ready, Brian?
We're ready now, thank you. We just had to make sure we have the right people on base here. Go for it.
No worries, no worries. Good evening, Mayor Fitzgerald and members of council. I'm KJ Lewis. I'm your municipal relationship manager with Republic Services, and with me tonight is Travis Comfort, your contract administrator. And I'm, I have some slides to share, so I'm going to do that now. Can everyone see?
Yes.
Yes. Great, okay. Tonight, we'll be presenting the results of our biannual report, which is in your packet, and discussing the results of the services that were added last year, and reporting out on our most recent state of emergency, the ice storm. Here you see estimates of materials that were hauled between July and December 2020 on this slide, and there's some quick facts about your city and the vehicles and drivers that service your city. I'll just caution you not to draw too many conclusions from these numbers, as these weights and everything are best numbers, are sort of best estimates, and they're subject to change in our annual report, which is due August 15. The reason why these are best estimates is that this biennial report is due in February, and during the month of March, our finance team works on reporting to the county, which is a pretty rigorous process that's more accurate than what we can come up with in the middle of February, and it's used to inform the rate review process, which will be happening in May-June. The reason we say these are allocated estimates is because for, also for efficiency's sake, trucks do go through and collect material outside of the city limits. But it's different on this next slide in the industrial numbers. As you know, industrial means the large drop boxes. You'll see an example, picture in Slide 12. And the reason these numbers are more accurate is because it's one box, one location that a truck comes and picks up, rather than a combination of many different locations. We thought you might be interested in where materials go next after they're collected. Just a reminder that we are the hauler, and we're not in charge of flow control. That's a function of Metro and the county. I have great news on the customer service front this year. What you see here is a record of complaints received in 2020 by direct calls to our customer service center. We've hired up at our in-state local call centers, who in the last report that I received fielded 60% of the calls made to Oregon. And most of these calls were regarding changes to service level, so change in cart size or something like that. But also, in addition to our customer service center, on your city's website, you might know, there's a form that residents can fill out, and this form is super convenient because both our operations team and your government relations director, and also I do, and my general manager, receive these simultaneously, so we can take care of the issue immediately. The last time we received a complaint from a resident through this forum was on October 22nd in 2020, and in the entirety of 2020, we received eight complaints from residents through this forum, not just for the second half of 2020. So we're pretty, pretty happy that, it seems like people are happy with us. Now Travis is going to discuss the added services that were added last year, so I'm going to hand it over to Travis for the next couple of slides. Hopefully his mic works. Travis? I know he was having trouble with his microphone a little bit earlier this afternoon. Travis? I don't think we can hear Travis, so I'll just, I'll just carry on. As far as the temporary services that were added last year, the bulky waste pickup for senior citizens and ADA residents was wildly successful, and some might even say too successful. We projected the haul cost would be $40, but the first seven months showed that number to be closer to $65. And the initial estimate was based on customers possibly having maybe one yard of material out, but as you can see, people took advantage, and you know, even sometimes we had up to 12 yards of material, including appliances. We're nearly at budget for this project, and it's anticipated to be complete by April. At WRI, we set up a polystyrene number six Styrofoam collection drop-off. It's also had some success as far as amounts of material that we've collected. There, unfortunately, the contamination has been really high, and despite our best efforts to educate the public through BFM and through signage, people have not been bagging material. And as you can see in this next slide, I'll show you adding other, other items besides polystyrene. So at any rate, we are near budget with this project as well, and expected to conclude in April. With the temporary services, with the mail-back service for fluorescent tubes and batteries, this was really easy to implement during COVID, just handing out the kits and having people mail them back in. So we were able to distribute 86 bulk kits and 59 battery kits. As you know, we rolled out food scraps collection into yard debris carts. We worked in conjunction with your government affairs director and communications director to get the word out to residents that they can now include the food in their yard debris carts. It's just a quick reminder here that we'd like to remind the public to include only the food, not so-called compostable products, because they don't break down at the compost facility at the same rate. So no compostable ware, so-called compostable bags, and definitely no clam shells. The Metro Commercial Food Waste Mandate has been postponed until spring of next year at this time. Some more on that later. And lastly, I just have a few notes on our latest state of emergency. It's been quite a year of states of emergency. Our operations team has worked hand-in-hand with your Public Works Department to clean up and remove all of the debris from the ice storm. And as you can see, quite a lot has been hauled so far. As you can surmise, our employees were also affected by the ice storm and subsequent power outages. WRI itself was without power for four days, and we lost several really lovely trees. But I just wanted to point this out to assure you that we take caring for our employees and taking care of your residents, our customers, extremely seriously, so that we can be there at your home every week, delivering the services that you rely on. Lastly, I just wanted to show you a few of the awards and recognitions that we've received in 2020, including the World's Most Ethical Company, the Best Employers for Women, and one of the 100 Best Corporate Citizens. And I'm ready for any questions if you have them. Thank you.
Thank you, KJ. That was, that was a great report, and I first want to congratulate you and Travis and all of your colleagues on these awards. That is as important as it ever could be right now, so I'm really glad to see that. And also, thank you for, for the efforts to continue to, you know, be as sustainable, you know, help the refuse collection business be as sustainable as it can be. We can see a lot of efforts in that report to that regard in helping to keep our community clean. The, the customer service results that you showed, I thought, are just really outstanding. So that's, that doesn't happen by accident, and happens, that's, that's a very good report. I did want to know about the Styrofoam report, the comments you made about how, you know, it's a new thing, that you're collecting that, and maybe people just are not aware of how that has to be handled. Have you ever seen any really unique, I mean, and there's always a huge effort to communicate and educate the public, and I'm sure the city would help with that, too. But what are, are there any sort of novel ways of getting people's attention that you've seen that high school groups or other groups might do to build public awareness about how to, I'm sure you've thought this through, I just wonder if there's anything besides the normal channels of communication?
There, there certainly must be, and I would absolutely welcome any suggestions. High school groups are a great idea. The traditional channels of using your social or, you know, your social media, BFM and signage, we don't have an employee standing right there, that would make it a lot more expensive, but, you know, I think there must be certainly ways to get creative, especially as we're starting to open up as a, you know, post-COVID world. Yeah.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions? Counselor Leahan?
I just wanted to say, express our gratitude to how quickly Republic Services stepped in on the storm cleanup and partnered with the city of Wilsonville, and I'm sure the city manager could add way more than me, but they were always there when I came by multiple times to, to the recycle center for the, the yard debris, tree debris, that was, that still is a major issue throughout the town, and they were, you know, having the number of Republic Services people there on site and continually through, through the weekends, that, that was, that was really great. So I just want to express our, our appreciation as a community.
Thank you, Counselor. It's really a pleasure to partner with your city, and your staff makes it, makes it easy to do so.
I would add, I would add one thing to that. We also appreciate the fact that Republic worked with us on the disposal aspect of this as well, and allowed us to work with the company out of, I believe, Longview that was going to use the debris for hog fuel, which was kind of a creative way to get rid of that and kind of 360 that, that life cycle of those trees, although we weren't looking to get rid of them in that manner. Republic did kind of look at the language in the contract we have with them, and were very amenable to helping us out there, so we appreciate that as well.
That is a huge thank you. We just can't thank you enough for that, and it, the fact, I mean, we hear that, we've heard those thank yous from so many citizens, from each of us as well, and really glad that worked out. And I think that, Counselor Linville, you had your hand up?
I do have my hand up. And KJ, I just want to echo, thank you again for all of the great service, and I think, you know, we rarely hear that there are complaints about Republic, so it's a great partnership, I think. I know that the, the senior citizen and ADA bulk, bulk waste and the Styrofoam recycling are going to end here in April. They were projects that were part of kind of a reconciliation of the budget from last year.
Yep.
Do you know, do you know yet whether any of those services will continue into this next year, or when would we know that? And the, and the question is, I guess, on the bulk with, was that service interrupted for a period of time?
Briefly.
Because of COVID?
Briefly, at the beginning, when we were still learning about how the virus was transmitted. But I think a lot of people enjoyed, enjoyed that program, and certainly we have bulky waste pickup at the curb all the time, so people can still avail themselves of that opportunity. It just won't be part of the added services, part of the reconciliation process.
And Counselor, we'll have a full review in the annual report in August, and then so when we come back for the rate review, we'll have options for the city to look at each of those programs and if they would like to continue them in any sort of fashion.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for joining us for this report, and we'll be thinking about ways to help communicate getting that recycling done more efficiently.
Thank you, Mayor.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I would like to now introduce a Charbonneau resident, Linda Moulton, who was the driving force behind the Soaring Spirits Art Display that was recently installed in our Parks and Recreation Admin Building. We talked about it briefly at a recent meeting. Linda, thank you for joining us.
Well, thanks for having me. I'm really glad to have the opportunity to thank all of you, because everyone on your staff is just an absolutely, absolute joy to work with, I'll tell you. And they made the, the project possible. They really did. And you took me on sight unseen. You didn't really know what, what I had in mind or who I was, and you still approved, approved the idea, so thank you for that.
Well, it's a beautiful project, and we have a whole series of photographs of it in our council package, and I think, oh, good, we're going
Well, thanks for having me. I'm really glad to have the opportunity to thank all of you, because everyone on your staff is just an absolutely, absolute joy to work with, I'll tell you. And they made the project possible. They really did. And you took me on sight unseen. You didn't really know what I had in mind or who I was, and you still approved the idea. So thank you for that.
Well, it's a beautiful project. And we have a whole series of photographs of it in our council package. And I think, oh, good, we're going to be able to show this.
Oh, good. Well, they're... Oh, here they come. Zoe, I tell you, she's something else. Well, do you think I got a few cranes? And these boxes here were from, I believe, high school leadership groups, although I'm not sure. I really didn't get any information about who had donated all those. But people were just so wonderful about contributing. The whole community really got into it. And these are hanging in my dining room window before they ever made it down to the city. And I miss them when they were gone. Yeah. And Javi was up and down that ladder a million times that day, hanging all those. And your staff also came up with the idea of putting those poles across to the window sills to hang them from. And that was a brilliant idea. We really... We had a few iterations of how all that was going to happen. But it really, it worked beautifully. It really did. Have you all been down to see it?
Yes.
Good.
It's beautiful.
It really is. I've been down there a number of times. Friends keep calling and saying, well, you go down with us. And so they're... I think they're getting really tired of seeing me down at Park and Rec. But they're very gracious about me coming in all the time.
Is there anything else that we... I mean, I think we featured this in our newsletter and in some social media. And I have heard people talking about it. And I think it's something that's, you know, couldn't think of a better conversation topic about communities coming together. So I'm glad to have this as part of our meeting today, too.
And I appreciate it, too. Thank you.
Council President Ockerbaum?
Yeah, Ockerbaum.
Sure. If Councilor Leehan wants... You were just starting something. Go ahead, Councilor Leehan.
Well, I was just going to say, this is such a fabulously beautiful project. Have we gotten notice out to the television stations? I think they should do a TV thing on it.
Minus me, thank you.
Well, yeah, but somebody who could stand and talk about it. But, I mean, they do human interest things that are way less interesting than this. So I think we should put a press release out on this item to the, at least to the main local news stations.
One thing that is important to know, I think, is that this is not an original idea. There are installations like this really all over the world right now. And so I got the idea from someone else. But I think it's a fabulous idea.
Where else in the Portland metro area they have this?
I don't know in the Portland area.
I don't think so. It's just us. So there you go.
Aren't we lucky? Yeah. Well, and I would like to find out what, who the leadership groups were that contributed all these boxes that you see here, and bags full, because I would love to thank them for their efforts. So.
Well, we have another comment on the chat from Council President Ockerbaum. Do you want to...
Sure, I'll jump in now. I wanted to echo as well, thank you so much. This has been such a gift to our community. And I don't know that you realize how many people this touches, and the ability for community members to contribute and to participate in folding some of the cranes, you know. My daughter and I folded a couple of the cranes and dropped them off at the Parks and Rec building. And she's in primary school, you know. So there's a wide range of people, I think, that were able to be involved and feel a connection in some way to this. And it's really just such a beautiful way for us all to consider what this pandemic has meant to so many people in the community. And so thank you very much for that gift.
Well, thank you. It was a gift for me also. It really was. It was a wonderful thing for me to be able to do. And I probably, I think I probably got more out of it than anyone. So thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Linda. Look forward to seeing you again soon.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. That was really wonderful. Zo?
Thank you, Mayor Fitzgerald. I'd just like to note before we go that Linda put this together. She brought this to the city, I believe, in August. And it was just kind of a shining light at the time. And we were appreciative to be able to bring this forward and make it happen. There were over 200 cranes donated by community members. And then Linda and her family strung them all together in those beautiful strands and worked with our staff in order to find a place for them at the Parks and Rec building. And we hope to keep this for a nice period of time to be determined. But we're very excited about this.
Well, Zoe, I'm so happy to see what you look like without a mask on. Thanks, Zo, for everything you've done. It couldn't have happened without you.
Well, it's a great way to bring a lot of smiles and joy and forward-thinking at a time we all needed it, among all the other benefits it brought.
Thanks very much.
All right. Thank you, Linda, and thank you, Zo. We have one more item under the communications. And this is an opportunity for the council. If any of you would like to ask questions about the letter addressed to council regarding the final action on the revised Willamette Basin Mercury Total Maximum Daily Load. And we have the staff here to ask any questions that you may have. This letter was in the packet.
Well, good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. I'm Kerry Rappold, Natural Resources Manager. I won't take up too much of your time. But yes, you've seen, there was a letter that was sent from DEQ to the city council. The same letter went to a number of different designated management agencies in the state that are responsible for this TMDL. At this point, there's no action required of the council. The Mercury TMDL is basically the third leg of TMDLs that we're dealing with. The other two are stream temperature and bacteria. And so we'll be working with our consultants over the next, you know, year or more in terms of coordinating with DEQ and figuring out exactly the best approach to dealing with mercury. Just briefly, the biggest source of mercury that is in our community and just about anywhere comes from the atmosphere. And so that's the deposition that we get that comes from natural causes, such as volcanoes, forest fires, but also, you know, man-made causes such as industries, power plants. So we'll be working actively, like I said, over the next year or more to determine the best approach in regards to managing mercury.
Thank you, Kerry. I guess I do have one question about that. Regarding working ahead for the best approach to manage this, does DEQ give you a good amount of guidance on that and some tools?
Yeah, we work really collaboratively with them. And what also is related to this is our NPDS permit. And so we're actually in the process of getting a new permit issued by DEQ. And so one thing we don't know yet is exactly how we'll be handling this as part of our permit also. And so there's some steps that we need to clarify yet in regards to our own permit, our NPDS MS4 permit, as well as how this will fit in with our existing implementation plan. So some of this, you know, is kind of a work in progress, as we have those types of discussions, not only with DEQ, but with all of our other partners that we work with on these types of things.
Okay. Well, thank you. I'm not seeing any more hands raised for this item. So thank you, Kerry, Mr. Rappold.
Thank you so much.
And now we will move on to the community input section of the meeting.
We have two.
And this is an opportunity for visitors to address the city council on items not on the agenda. It is also the time to address items that are on the agenda but are not scheduled for a public hearing. Staff in the city council will make every effort to respond to questions raised during citizens' input before tonight's meeting ends, or as quickly as possible thereafter. Please limit your comments to three minutes, and use the raise hand feature of Zoom to let us know you would like to present comments.
Go ahead, Beth.
Do we have any?
We have... I think we have two, Your Honor. The first one is, well, it looks like a couple, Michelle and Anthony Calaño. I hope I'm pronouncing that right.
Go ahead.
Hi there. My last name is Calcano.
Not even close. I'm sorry.
That's okay. It's a tough one. I just, actually, I don't have any big thing to say. I just am a community member, and I've been here for about 14 years and not super involved. I pay attention to large issues and vote, but other than that, have never been to a council meeting. So it's been interesting to sit through. And thank you for all that you guys do. And it's been interesting to hear the different things that you talk about. One thing that came to my mind, just as someone that, you know, is kind of on the outside part of the community, but not super involved, some of the information I didn't know about. And so I don't know, you know, I'm sitting here thinking, brainstorming myself, like, how do people more like me find more information? And I don't exactly have an answer. But some of the Republic Waste stuff was interesting for me to hear. I didn't know about the Styrofoam. And so some of those things, I'm like, man, how, I don't know. How else can I get information, you know? So just anyway, just wanted to put that out there.
I have a couple ideas, Mayor, unless you want to share what you're thinking.
Well, I wanted to thank you for bringing this up, Michelle. And it's a great question. I will just look forward to hearing from our city manager about many different ways that we have that you can be informed and help spread the word. And I love that you're coming to the city council to bring this up, to find out those first sources of information. And we have our website. We have a newsletter that comes out. We'll make sure that you are on that mailing list. And then there are also some other ways that I think it might be good for Zo or somebody in the city manager's office to follow up with you as well, or I'd be glad to, about committees and our Citizens Academy as well. So thank you. And Mr. Cosgrove?
I think you covered it very well yourself, Mayor. I will say that on our website, there is a feature that allows folks to self-select on what information they would like to receive advance notice on, like if they're interested in city council meetings. You can click on that box, and it will send you notifications on agendas and upcoming meetings. You can really go through all the city's programs and services and decide which programs and services or things you're interested in and self-select on that. But the Boons Ferry Messenger is by far our most prolific source of city information. But the website has the most current information. And yeah, if you're interested in learning more about the city and you want to be involved, either myself or Ms. Monahan, or it sounds like the mayor would be willing to sit down with you and plug you in. I would say that if you really want to get into the nuts and bolts of the city government itself, that it's too late for this year. But we do a Citizens Academy that's a six-month kind of deep dive into all the programs and services we provide. And if you want to be involved in that in next year's class, the class of 2022, which we'll hopefully be meeting in person by then, we can certainly plug you into that and let you know when the application's coming out. And you can avail yourself of that or any other volunteer opportunity that we have in the city.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I have Councilor Linville.
I just wanted to mention, too, thank you for coming and speaking. It's delightful to have people come and ask those kinds of questions. There is so much information, and it's, I know it's not always easy to get. But I would also mention that after our city council, of course, our city council meetings are available on video for you to watch at your convenience. And we know that that's probably the highlight of your day. But they are there, and you can watch pieces or move on. And so I certainly encourage you to do that on both our public station on the television, but also on our YouTube channel. But the other thing is that after city council meetings, Bill Evans, who is in charge of communications for the city, he puts out kind of the Cliff Notes, the short, you know, the short answer piece of kind of what the council did. So that's another opportunity, and that's available on the website as well. So thank you for coming. We're happy to have you.
Thank you. And Councilor Leehan?
Yeah, similarly, I was just going to say, looks like your hands are full with a little one at the moment. But within a year or two, you would be an excellent candidate for either one of our boards or commissions or city council itself. So if you're interested, there is always a role to play. So thank you for coming.
Council President Ockerbaum?
Sorry, I have to jump in here, too. I just wanted to say, even with a little one, you can also be involved in a boarder commission.
Something.
Exactly. There's many ways to also get support and to do that. My daughter has attended several city meetings in her young childhood.
All right. Thank you, Michelle. And the city manager will follow up. And I believe now we have... Do we have one more person?
I'm being told that that concludes citizen input.
Okay. Now we'll move to Councilor comments, liaison reports, and meeting announcements, starting with Council President Ockerbaum.
Thank you. Let's see, this week, actually, today, this morning, I attended the Washington County Coordinating Committee meeting. And there was some discussion on updates to the regional emergency transportation routes planned for Washington County that was presented in that meeting. And I found it interesting, two kind of segments that touch Wilsonville added to that emergency routes plan, including Wilsonville Road and a section where Day Road comes down to meet the North Wilsonville I-5 exit. So there was quite a bit of discussion on that. I also wanted to mention, and this isn't so much of a meeting, it's just kind of something to remember as we're moving forward at this point in spring. And I do believe that the Wilsonville Police has tried to push out this information and advertise. But our schools are welcoming students back into the school buildings. And so you'll see more students walking to and from school and those school zones. And careful driving practices around our schools is back into full effect during the school hours to reduce your speeds and look for, you know, kids in those areas. So I hope that everyone is vigilant in trying to make it be a safe and welcoming place as our students are returning back to their school buildings. And that's it for me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Leehan?
I'm trying to think. I had a meeting this morning with the Willamette Falls and Landings Heritage Area Coalition, the panel with the longest name of anything we do. And it was a good meeting. But I should let you know that the executive director, Siobhan Taylor, is stepping down. So we'll be looking for a new executive director shortly. So that's about the size of that, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Lindville.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a couple of things. One, I just wanted to kind of pass along some good news, that we've been trying to work, I am a commissioner on the Willamette Falls Lock Commission, and we have been trying to get the locks opened back up again, and have had in last year's legislature and this year's legislature, a bill that would allow a public authority, authority of a public corporation to oversee the locks and the transfer of the locks from the Corps of Engineers. And I'm pleased to announce that that bill has been passed out of the Joint Transportation Committee and now goes to the floor. So, that's pretty exciting news, and we're hopeful that it will pass in this legislative session and will be on the way to hopefully opening the locks up for the public, we're excited about that. I also wanted to mention that we have a resolution that's coming up, and I thought maybe Council President Ockerbaum might mention this, but we have a resolution that's coming up, Resolution 2885, that will authorize South Metro, our city of Wilsonville, to purchase a battery electric bus and the charging equipment that goes with it, and this will allow us to have an entire route that will be all electric. And we are trying to move to sustainability and green energy for all of our transportation, and this will remove the last of the diesel buses that will be on that route, on Route 4, and that's very exciting, very exciting news. And probably the best part for the city of Wilsonville is that the majority of that bus purchase will be by grant, and the other will be through our state transportation fund, so that is the great work of our Director Brazier and Brazier, and the work of our great staff in our smart department. And then the last thing I wanted to just mention was that we will be starting our Wilsonville Metro Community Enhancement Project meetings, and we'll soon be putting out applications for community groups to apply for those funds. And I would just encourage any groups that are thinking about enhancement projects for our city to go on the website, on our city website, and you can Google just the word enhancement, and up will come the information about that project. That is free money to your group to do an enhancement project, and it comes from some of the transfer of our waste through Metro. And so be thinking about that and what projects might be useful and helpful, because we would love to have a long list of projects to choose from and to find. And that is my report, thank you.
I see Councilor Leehan raising her hand.
I just thought of another thing, and I know that this might not be entirely appropriate because, of course, I am loyal to, I mean, to Wilsonville High School, but I'm a graduate of West Lynn, as are everyone from Wilsonville who went to high school before 1995. We're West Lynn alumni, and I have to mention that we are now, have just started the football season. It should have been last fall, but now is starting in March. And West Lynn is rated number one in the state of Oregon, and the first game we won 37 to 6 against Tewallaton, and this last Friday, 41 to 2 against Lakewood. Wilsonville is not in the same league, you know, we're in, West Lynn is in 6A and Wilsonville is 5A, I think. But anyway, I just wanted to throw that in for all the Wilsonville alumni who, before 1995, were part of West Lynn. This is huge, especially against Tewallaton and Lakewood. Ta-da, that's my football piece.
That is excellent, thank you, Charlotte. We just had our, we have people of all interests and ages and sports interests watching the city council meeting, and now the football fans are ready to watch that game.
Usually, we don't have football in March. This is unusual.
Well, thank you very much. So, we will now move to the consent agenda, and I'd like to ask the city attorney to please read the consent agenda.
Resolution number 2882, a resolution in order amending Resolution number 2870 to further extend the local state of emergency and emergency measures as authorized by Resolution number 2308, I mean, 2803. Resolution number 2883, a resolution of the city of Wilsonville adopting the Oregon Plumbing Specialty Code and Oregon Electrical Specialty Code. Resolution number 2884, a resolution approving and applying the Tewallaton Valley Fire and Rescue Fire Prevention Code in the city of Wilsonville. Resolution number 2885, a resolution of the city of Wilsonville authorizing the South Metro Area Transit Smart to purchase 135-foot battery electric bus and charging equipment from Proterra Inc. Resolution number 2889, a resolution of the city of Wilsonville authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for provision of preliminary engineering services in connection with grade crossing improvements with Portland and Western Railroad for Phase II preliminary engineering and construction engineering inspection services for the Fifth Street Railroad Crossing work associated with the Fifth Street-Kinsman Road Extension Project. And finally, minutes of the March 1, 2021 city council meeting.
Your Honor, I would move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Do I have a second?
I will second the motion.
The consent agenda has been, approval has been moved and seconded, all in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
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 Motion passes four to zero. Just a minute, please, I have my notes here. Mr. Cosgrove, I must tell you, because I was uprooted from my normal office because of my modem breakdown, I do not have that legislative piece with me.
We should be able to, we should be able to put that up on the screen for you, Mayor.
That would be good.
Yeah, hang on, give us just a second here.
I had to go a few blocks to get near a working modem in a different office.
Give us just a second.
Did he record a procedure? I mean, yeah.
It's the legislative public hearing script.
I don't know if you can overuse a modem, it was working just fine until 2 o'clock.
Yes, COVID, yeah.
On his own?
Sorry. Yeah, I can go down a little bit.
For the last, for basically many hours a day for one year, that might be what it is.
You should just be able to read it from the screen, right?
Yeah.
We're going to share our screen here, Mayor, so give us a second, and then you can just read from the script there, there you go. Can you see that okay?
All right, this is good. I would like, I would like to call to order the Wilsonville City Council Public Hearing on Ordinance Number 2886, as has been read. Ladies and gentlemen.
It's a resolution, I'm sorry, Mayor, it's a resolution. Resolution number 2886.
Let me start over, this is regarding Resolution 2886 that the city attorney just read to us.
I haven't read it, I haven't read it yet, so let me read it really quickly.
You just read the title of it. So, I would like to call to order the Wilsonville City Public Hearing on Resolution 2886.
And, Mayor, I'm sorry, this is a little disjointed, but she does need to read the title. She read the, she read the other resolutions that were part of the consent agenda, so she does need to read the title of this resolution as well. So she can do that, and then you can open the public hearing.
Resolution number 2886.
I'm talking for her to read, yeah, please read it.
A resolution authorizing a supplemental budget adjustment for fiscal year 202021.
All right, I think that's good.
Ladies and gentlemen, the city council will be taking public testimony tonight at the public hearing. The hearing will be conducted in the following manner. City staff will present a report, and then testimony by proponents, opponents, and those neither in favor or against the proposed resolution. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic and Governor Brown's emergency order, this meeting is being held remotely by Zoom. Information regarding how the public could attend this meeting remotely and give testimony is posted at City Hall and was also timely published in the Wilsonville spokesman and is also posted on the city's website shown on the screen. Notice was given that the testimony could be submitted for the record in advance in writing by emailing or mailing it to the city recorder. If you are listening to this meeting remotely, when the time for public testimony is called, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom or press star nine on your telephone if you'd like to testify. If you prefer and have not already done so, you may also submit written testimony by email at any time before the public hearing is closed, by emailing the city recorder at the email address which will be shown on the screen. Any testimony by email will be read into the record. Please include your name and mailing address with your email testimony. If you are having difficulties with these instructions, you may call the number shown on the screen and enter webinar ID number shown on the screen when prompted, and I think we're going to show that information shortly. When called to testify, state your full name and address for the record. I request from those providing testimony not to repeat testimony that has already been given to the city council, simply indicating you agree with the prior testimony given by a speaker you identify is the issue. And here is the contact information that I referenced. Do we have any, we don't, do we have anyone wanting to testify?
There are no, no one is waiting to testify on this matter, Mayor.
And so I am now going to ask the city manager just for the procedural tip here, I think I'm closing the hearing.
Yeah, you can gavel out the public hearing now.
Public hearing is now closed. Are we ready to move on to the city manager's business?
Well, I, we need to vote on this matter.
Motion.
Oh, sorry about that.
All right, so you just need a motion and a second, and then discussion, if any, and then we can move to me, I'm happy to be, I'm ready to go.
Thank you for that. So, I would now like to ask if I could have a motion to approve this resolution, Councilor Leehan.
I move to approve Resolution Number 2886.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes four to zero. I would now like to ask the city manager to give a report.
Okay, I just have two items for you tonight, Mayor, members of council. Councilor Lindville mentioned the Metro Enhancement Committee. I do want to note that the application process for this funding cycle is actually closed, and I'm going to try and just high-level this for you, but during the debris situation, I was really thinking about the funding issues that we have related to responding to the storm, and then thinking down the road about all the street trees that we've no doubt lost, and some of the trees in the common areas for HOAs, how are we going to pay for all that? And in having a conversation with the mayor at the debris site, I think on a cold Saturday, a couple Saturdays ago, she had brought up the idea of perhaps looking at Metro Enhancement Funds to deal with some of the costs, which got me to thinking, well, how could we use some of that money and program it going forward? So I did, based on that conversation, I had Zo reach out to our metro rep who's responsible for helping deal with that IGA that we have with them, and just run that up the metro flagpole to see if there would be any concerns or opposition to us doing that. And kind of the good news is, is that we can use some of that money going forward, so we're putting together a list of ideas that we would take to the Metro Enhancement Committee on how we can maybe set aside a majority of that funding and maybe look at it in two different ways, because the majority of the applications that come in for those funds are generally from staff. So we could kind of put those in abeyance for now, look at the ones that are coming from community groups, because that's a smaller number and a smaller dollar amount, let those go forward, let the Metro Enhancement Committee do its thing on the recommendations for the community projects, but have staff come back to the Metro Enhancement Committee with a plan for street tree replacement, maybe having stump grinders come into the community for a couple weekends. So there's different things that we can do using that money, because it meets the criteria for community beautification, citywide, everybody would benefit, and we know that there's going to be folks out there that struggle, that are going to struggle to pay for a street tree. We also have some money from a previous grant, so what I want more than anything is just a nod of the head that that's something that you would be comfortable with me pursuing and bringing to the Metro Enhancement Committee with much more detail to follow. And I see head nods and thumbs up. And then I have one more thing that I would like to share with you that I have to read from my phone, so just bear with me. There's a group called SRTS out of Portland, that they've made some virtual backgrounds to use in Zoom meetings. It's not live cat faces, unfortunately, because that would be awesome, but they suggested that we share with our city councils to see if they would use them on one of their meetings and get a screenshot of them. This is a campaign for driver safety as kids return to school. We'll be doing some advertising in Boots Ferry Messenger in May, so they're being, we're being asked, do you think our council would have any interest in joining, in using these backgrounds? So what I'm going to do is I'm going to send you all the information, or have Zo do it in the morning. If you could take a look at it, and if you're willing to participate in this, it sounds like a good cause, I don't think there's anything hinky about it, it's been vetted, so we would, we would ask you all to consider doing that at a future meeting, and we would take some screenshots and send that to that group, I think it's a good cause. So that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cosgrove, and now we'll move to legal business, Ms. Jacobson.
Your Honor and council, earlier, you received a letter from me of a ceased, assist, and remove for a violation of a pole placement in the city without a building permit and without building inspection, and the letter requires the removal of that pole. In speaking to each of you earlier, I got your concurrence that we should continue on with that enforcement, and so I'm just bringing it up here to, again, get your thumbs up on moving forward with that. Yes?
Yes.
Looks like I have a yes from everyone. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay, that's it for legal business. Okay, I want to, before I adjourn the meeting, remind us that we are going to have a brief urban renewal meeting after this meeting. This will, I will now adjourn the meeting of the Wilsonville City Council. Calling to order, the Calling to order the gen, the March 15, 2021 meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency to order and request a roll call, please.
Member Linville?
Here.
Member Ockervall?
Here.
Member Leehan?
Here.
Chair Fitzgerald?
Here.
And, uh, excuse me, member West is excused.
Thank you. Uh, will the legal council please read the consent? Oh, excuse me. Um, sorry, guys. This, let me start with the notice about citizen input for the Urban Renewal Agency. This is an opportunity for visitors to address the Urban Renewal Agency Board on items not on the agenda. It's also time to address items that are on the agenda but are not scheduled for a public hearing. Staff and the board will make every effort to respond to questions raised during citizen input before tonight's meeting ends or as quickly as possible thereafter. Please limit your comments to three minutes. And use the raise hand feature of Zoom to let us know if you'd like to provide comments. Do we have any input?
There is none.
Thank you. Will the agency legal council please read the consent agenda?
Uh, Urban Renewal Agency Resolution Number 316, a resolution of the city of Wilsonville Urban Renewal Agency Board authorizing the city manager to execute, execute an agreement for provision of preliminary engineering services in connection with grade crossing improvements with Portland and Western Railroad for Phase 1I preliminary engineering and construction engineering inspection services for the Fifth Street Railroad Crossing work associated with the Fifth Street Kinsman Road Extension Project.
Do I have a motion on consent?
Uh, hold, hold, hold. Is there something wrong on that?
In the minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. And then the second consent agenda item is minutes of the March 1, 2021 Urban Renewal Agency meeting. Sorry.
Chair, chair. Oh, go ahead.
Do I have a motion on consent?
Yes.
Councillor Leehan.
Oh, okay.
Muted.
But wait a second. I would move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Oops, can I interrupt for just a minute? Can I interrupt? I, I think there's a typo in the URA resolution that I just read. It says, it says Phase 1I, but I think that's supposed to be Phase 2. So just correct that. That's how it is.
I would move to, let me amend my motion to, uh, uh, move to approve the consent agenda as corrected.
Is there a second? I second, your honor. All in favor to approve the consent agenda as amended and corrected? Raise your hand and say aye.
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 The motion passes four to zero. The Urban Renewal Agency meeting is now adjourned at 8:24 PM.
Can I ask a technical question?
Yes.
Uh, are you, your honor, here at, in this meeting, are you your honor? Or are you chair? Or what? How should we be addressing?
I am the chair.
You're the chair. And, uh,
You're members.
Yeah, and we're just a bunch of people. Yeah.
So I may have said councillor. Yes, thank you.
No, but I said, I said chair and councillor, well, member Linville said, your honor. But my other question is, do we need to, uh, change our titles? Because our titles on the Zoom thing say councillor Leehan, council president Ockervall, et cetera, Ockervall, like that. Should they say member or just say?
If, if you're, yeah, I was gonna say, if, if you're that good at remembering that, then I think you should. But, um, you won't get punished if you don't. How's that?
I mean, I, I just didn't know, in terms of the record, you see, for urban renewal, because the record while we're on Zoom is, here it is, it's being recorded looking like this.
Did you say we?
And I didn't know if that was accurate record.
I was just told by, uh, by Ms. Wolf, our IT guru, that we can make that change for you. So going forward, we, we will change your titles so that anyone watching the urban renewal meeting, um, anyone who's lucky enough to.
Yeah, we don't want them to confuse us with the city council.
No, we don't. Yes. So yes, going forward, we will make, uh, we will endeavor to change your titles before we go into urban renewal meetings.
Thank you. Thank you, um, member Leehan. And I now have, I have three weeks to prepare to get that right for the next meeting.
We're gonna cut you a lot of slack, uh, mayor, because you, you are, you are homeless right now. So you're, you're borrowing a friend's house to run this meeting. So you did a good job.
It wasn't my favorite thing to pack up three computers and, and a couple of power cords 15 minutes before the meeting. So it was rather, uh,
Plus, we never made that change with the previous mayor anyway. It never came up.
Well, it's a new breakthrough. Well, this meeting, this meeting, um, I'm going to re-adjourn the meeting at 8:27. Thank you.
Good night.